The Town of Dudley Board of Selectmen Meeting, Monday, November twenty first, two thousand twenty-two. Call this meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
All right, approving minutes of eleven seven twenty-two. What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of November seventh, twenty twenty-two as written.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, opposed, unanimous. Citizens' comments, does anyone have anything they want to talk to, talk about that's not already on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move along. Town administrators' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It will be a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen School Committee, and I believe that we will post for the FAA as well on December fifth at six thirty PM. The purpose of this meeting will be to hear an unbiased, independent report from Mark Abrahams relative to the future operational needs of the school district, specifically as it applies to the Town of Dudley's assessment and the operational needs of the municipal side of Dudley's government. As the board recalls, Mark Abrahams did the independent review of the school district's short-term needs in two thousand seventeen that resulted in the successful proposition two and a half override, and his son Matt did some grant work under a community compact grant, designing the town's capital improvement plan. I believe this will be a timely, independent report and will follow tonight's tax classification hearing, where we will learn a little bit more about the increased property values and still even lower property tax rates. As we have been discussing for almost two years now, and especially as we've discussed during our budget preparations for the current fiscal year, there will be some very difficult decisions to be made by this board, the FAA, and ultimately the voters in terms of the next budget, and I strongly encourage and hope that the voters will tune into the choices that we will have in the upcoming months ahead. We're going into a, next month or so, we're going to be going into the holidays, so Town Hall hours on Thanksgiving will, per policy, will be closed on Thanksgiving so that staff can enjoy their day off. We're also closed the following day, which is Friday, and that's also part of personal policy, that the Town Hall building will be closed. And we have an Alice training on Friday, which is the summer, on Friday, December ninth, on Friday, and will be closed for the day on that date as well, December ninth, we'll have it all posted. The Alice training, as the board recalls, is an active, an active shooter training, and we want to deliver that to our Town Hall personnel, which we think is very important. For, in terms of grants, Ty and Juan is the top-ranked respondent to the RFQ that the town put out for engineering services for the First Avenue Infrastructure Improvement Project. This is part of the CDBG infrastructure grant program, so we're going to start moving on that. The board has heard about this before, but our EV charging stations that were purchased under a grant program are finally up and running as of last week. They've been installed, but they weren't activated yet, and the first few transactions were made successfully, so any residents or anyone who needs to charge their electric vehicles can go on down to the library and plug in while they're taking advantage of the services down there. Power Engineering has been awarded the Culvert Design Options and Application Preparation to apply for a FEMA Hazards Mitigation Grant, which will address all three culverts on Schofield Ave, also known as the Port Ashbrook Culver Improvement Program. The cost for this engineering will be split with the Enterprise Fund and the General Fund, specifically on the General Fund side, from the grant and project design line item that was funded through ARPR. This split investment of just under forty thousand will make ready a multimillion-dollar grant application, and it is a prime example of how and why we generally recommend using one-time money as an investment in the potential of securing more targeted grant funding for projects that would never be capable of being completed through our tax base. I'd like to thank all the Town Hall staff and make sure that the board is aware of the work done by the Town Clerk's Office and with the cooperation of the additional Town staff to accommodate the staffing that was required for voting the day after our last meeting. We're happy to report that the large capital purchase of the fire departments, to replace the fire department's twenty-seven-year-old rescue, was approved by the voters, and I know that the chief will be working to get the project moving. And then finally, Mr. Chairman, Santa will be making his tour of Dudley on Saturday, December third, two thousand twenty-two, on Dudley Fire's ladder two, and we anticipate that there will be some additional celebrities on board, including Frosty, some helpers, and apparently the Grinch insisted that he will be acting as command for the event and be on the ladder truck as well. They're coming. Santa's route is currently posted on Facebook, and I believe that we'll have an app available to see where he is so that we don't, so that the neighborhoods don't have to stand outside for hours and wait for his arrival. Following Santa's tour, the Town Christmas Tree Lighting will take place at the Town Hall at six PM, and the kids are invited to come down to the Town Hall, meet Santa, and enjoy some refreshments. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions for the Town Administrator? Mr. Mars?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the Town Administrator's report.
Second.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Public hearing, Lisa Berg, Principal Assessor Tax Classification Hearing, and open that at six forty-three.
I hope this works this year.
Next time's the first time, right?
Okay, so we hold this classification hearing every year. I don't think anybody on the board's new. Mark was here last year, right? So the purpose of this hearing is for the Board of Selectmen to vote and determine if the Town of Dudley will have a single tax rate or a split tax rate. A vote for a single tax rate would mean that there's one tax rate for all classes of properties, and a vote for a split tax rate would shift the burden of the residential tax onto the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. So this pie chart you see, it's not much different than last year. We have ninety-three point two percent residential properties, two and a half percent commercial, two percent industrial, and two point three percent in personal property. So here is the historic class percentages. As you can see, the residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property percentages pretty much stay the same every year. They fluctuate.
The fade is a little bit slow, Lisa, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
It's a little bit slow catching up.
A lot of it.
So you have to be a little bit.
A lot of it slow?
And this is one of the most important.
Yes, it is. Okay, here we go.
There it is.
All right. So as you can see, I go all the way back to two thousand fifteen, and it, percentages fluctuate very little. So we're not showing a large increase in the commercial, industrial, and personal property percentages at all.
Is that, Lisa, looks like commercial and business have gone down?
A little bit. Like, I don't know.
From two thousand fifteen, it's a full percentage.
How do we go back? Yeah?
Yeah.
If that was on a graph, it would be a straight line down.
Right.
Yeah, they fluctuate very little. So for example, there might be a fluctuation in the industrial next year because Mace Adhesives has burned down. If they don't rebuild by the next tax classification hearing, you'll see a slight change in the percentage there most likely.
What's the definition of personal property then?
So personal property would be any commercial or industrial properties that have, I'm sorry, any businesses. So for example, Al's Pizza. We count all their personal property in there, their boxes, their food, their booths, their counters, their inventory. And the Town of Dudley does have a ten thousand dollar exemption, so if their personal property is less than ten thousand dollars, they do not get assessed, they do not get valued. I mean, they don't get assessed and receive a bill. Okay. And we don't have many businesses. Most of our, most of our personal property comes from the utility companies, Mass Electric, Boston Gas. So you can see here on the top ten taxpayers, Massachusetts Electric is the number-one taxpayer in town, but that's personal property. So then we have two taxpayers that are over six million dollars. That fluctuates a little bit. They slip up or down a notch each year. Boston Gas, again, it's a, it's a personal property. It's a utility company that we receive taxes from, but it's not a company that lives in the town or does business in the town. And you get Gentex. Then we have two taxpayers that are over three million. Four taxpayers over two million. So those are our top. And then we have nineteen taxpayers that are over a million. Everybody else is, is under a million dollars. And two of those, as you can see, are Verizon, New England, again, a utility. WM Recycle America, that's a, I believe that's a non-piloted solar farm. Okay, so. I didn't change that, you know, it's two thousand twenty-two. I didn't change that to twenty-three, my apologies. So this is the average assessed values for two thousand twenty-three. So the average single-family homes are about three hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars. Condominiums have gone up to a hundred and forty-five thousand eight sixty-six. Two families average two eighty-three, four eighty-two. Average three family is three forty-eight, one seventy-six. So every year I show you the shift options, so.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a question?
Yes.
What was the average residential last year?
I want to say it was, it was the high twos. I want to say two ninety and change.
Okay, yeah, it was under three.
Yeah, it was under three. So right now, we've finished up the recap sheet, and we're waiting to get our tax rate approved. I think we're close, but we don't have the approval yet. So of course, this, this tax rate I have here is proposed. So if we have the tax rate set at ten dollars and sixteen cents, residential will pay that per one thousand, and so will the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. So the average single-family tax bill will be three thousand six sixty-seven, and the average commercial, industrial, and personal property bill will be five thousand seventy-two. So I've shifted the burdens by five percent increments. All right, so if we shift five percent, the residential tax rate will go down to ten dollars and twelve cents, which will be a savings of fourteen dollars per tax bill. If the commercial, industrial, and personal property goes up to ten sixty-seven with the shift, their average tax bill will be five thousand three twenty-six, and they'll see a two hundred and fifty-four dollar tax increase. So as you can see, five percent doesn't really save the single-family properties much, but it's pretty high for the CIP properties. So if we go all the way down to the bottom, you can see that the tax rate at nine dollars and ninety-four cents for the shifts would save the single-family home taxpayers seventy-nine dollars a year, and the burden would be one thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars on the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. In our town, as you, as you saw, we don't have a lot of large businesses in town. A lot of them are, like I say every year, we have our.
Press the button, next thing, no, this one.
This one? We have our hair salons, we have our liquor stores, you know, they're all little shops, our pizza places. They're the ones that are really going to get hurt by this if you shift any of the burden over to those properties. Businesses like Verizon and Boston Gas, all those are big, big companies that could afford this increase. I just think it would really hurt our smaller businesses in town. All right, what happened?
It'll go.
It's going so well.
It's too good to be true.
Is that button still on?
Red?
Any questions while we're waiting?
I really want, want you all to see the surrounding towns and what the tax rates are doing, the surrounding towns, and where we're at if this thing ever moves.
Not spending a lot of tax money on technology, are we?
The animation was too much for our system to handle.
Exactly.
There we go. So here's our history of our assessed values by class, same as the percentages. If you, if you look down at each column, not a lot of change. It's pretty consistent. Okay, so here's some general statistics. The assessment date for fiscal two thousand twenty-three values is January first of two thousand twenty-two. We're allowed to go through June thirtieth of the year because we had adopted chapter six fifty-three, and that's where we pick up values on new constructions, new construction that gets occupancies by June thirtieth. We can pick that new growth up until then. Our fiscal two thousand twenty-three assessments were approved by the DOR on November tenth. Out of the three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns in Massachusetts, only a hundred and fifteen of these have split tax rates. As a matter of fact, I think you guys know Webster had a split tax rate for many, many years, and they went back recently, last year, the year before, to a single. Dudley is the seventy-fourth lowest tax rate in the state of Massachusetts. But the town's without a split tax rate is, they are amongst the lowest. We are amongst the lowest. So here are the overall increases this year. Single families on an average went up seventeen percent. Condominiums went up on an average of nineteen percent. Multis went up twenty percent. Commercial, industrial only went up four percent.
Assessments.
Assessments, yeah. The town's new growth value was twelve million five thirty-one one sixty-one, so this added a hundred and forty-six thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars in new growth in revenues. And here's our five-year history of tax rates. Thirteen fifty was the year of the fire department and the schools. That's why that was so high, and as you can see, since then it has gone down. So this is the one I really want you to look at. I've compared us to Charlton, Douglas, Lester, Oxford, Southbridge, Sturbridge, and Webster. So if you look down the tax rates in the third column, and we're proposed at ten sixteen, we're not even close to all these towns. They're much, much higher than us. And obviously, all the average single-family tax bills are higher, and their residential and residential percentages and the CIP percentages are not that far off from ours. So you would think that if you look at Webster, where was Webster? Webster has a lot higher CIP properties, and they still went back to a single tax rate. They chose not to shift the burden onto the CIP properties anymore. So in conclusion, it is the recommendation of the Board of Assessors that the selectmen will vote on a single tax rate again this year. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
There's no, just a quick one.
We have four questions. We'll go in order.
Have we, have we ever had a split rate, or have we always had one?
Never. It's always been a single, because we don't have a lot of industry.
How do farms get taxed?
Farms file under the chapter sixty-one chapters, and they get a discount because they work it, and they have to generate so much income every year.
And food, of course, isn't generally taxed, though. It doesn't, it's no source of revenue.
Trying to figure out what, you know, the difference between Dudley and other towns, right?
Right.
You're right, because a lot of towns don't have farmland, right?
Let's go in order.
Okay, that's right.
Mr. Mars?
No, go ahead.
I was just going to comment on what Mr. Rudis had, that kind of dovetails into the presentation that we had our intern do this past summer. Jonathan, correct me on the numbers, it was well over twenty-five percent of our land bases, either farmland, protected farmland, sixty-one A or.
Recreation.
Recreation or nonprofit conservation. So we're kind of hamstrung here anyway.
So you're not just going to average them?
Good job biting your tongue, Mr. Chairman. So, so I, again, it's up on the screen again. Is there any, there's no reason for us to believe that Dudley's the only town where property values have been, have gone up. So in Sturbridge, where they're paying nineteen dollars per thousand, or Southbridge, where they're paying seventeen, or Oxford, where they're paying sixteen, and they have to provide the same level of services as Dudley. Dudley is going, is, their, their property values have all gone up. Their assessments will certainly go, have probably gone down to offset the two and a half offset, and we're going to go down to ten dollars and sixteen cents. It's very important that people understand that going into the next month of discussions about the proposition two and a half override, because we still need to, we still need to provide the same level of services that Sturbridge at nineteen fifteen provides per thousand, or Southbridge at seventeen ninety per thousand. Dudley now needs to provide the same level of service at ten dollars and sixteen cents per thousand. So it's important that the public understand that as we go into these discussions.
Yeah, no, thanks, Jonathan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lisa, great job as always. Thank you for that. Always informative. Couple of things I noticed for the, the trends, if you, the longer you look. Our bedroom, our residential is, has been trending up, you know, now it's above ninety-three. We're just, just a hair under Douglas now. And then, you know, from two thousand fifteen to now, our commercial, I mean, it's, it's a full percent. I mean, that translates to, you know, lost, lost revenue, if you think about it, right? So that was the, some of the, those are some of the trends I saw, so, you know, we really need, it's important, I think, we leave this alone. You know, Dudley is a fantastic value to the taxpayer, like Jonathan just said, with the services we all provide, you know, the best we can with what we have around here. Dudley, I think, is, that's our superpower. But, you know, in order to do that, like, we need to still make it business-friendly and leave it, leave it alone. That's my, my talk. Thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions, concerns?
The only other thing I would point out, Mr. Chairman, is that when Rich comes up and we have a discussion usually about replacing debt, this is where we have the room to replace the debt, where other towns are at thirteen, nineteen, seventeen, sixteen, thirteen, no glasses on, twenty-nine. We have, and we're retiring debt. Everybody's tax bill seems to be way down, and we're not replacing things. So when we go for, when we go for a debt exclusion vote, we really have to stress, and I think we've been pretty successful in doing it so far. We just passed the engine. We need to continue to stress that if there is room to replace that, that is what we should be doing.
Right, Mr. Chair, the next one, not, not only is it going to be the structural question, but the school. You know, the ballot approved the ten million dollar, well, under ten, but right around there, right, for their phase one?
Yeah.
And we haven't come up with a source of funding yet. So if that doesn't pass, that's a ballot question.
Mm-hmm.
If that doesn't pass at the ballot, we still have to fund that.
From the general.
From the general fund, which means when they do the sheets, come budget time, that's going to come right, right out of the downside, or the school's going to try to kick some in, and we're usually not too successful there, so. I think Jonathan said it best, and Rich always does a great job. Keep that, keep that level number. It's good for our bond, good for our borrowing rate. It's begging for the buckets, Mr. Mars.
Consistent for the taxpayers.
Consistent for the taxpayers. Yep.
When you look at it now, Mr. Chairman, it's actually inconsistent with other, the area towns. We're not keeping up with the area towns in terms of what the tax rate should be in our ability to continue to meet, meet the increase in costs.
The board's pleasure. Close the hearing at seven oh one.
Mr. Mars? Mr. Chairman, I move that we leave our, our tax rating rating as is, as a single tax rate.
Yeah, I'm on second discussion.
Second discussion.
If the motion, person will just add that that's the recommendation of all assessors. They're recommending a single rate, we're just going to.
You okay with that?
Sure, but it's, it's our, my recommendation too.
Yeah, well, that's right, you know, hopefully the vote's going to reflect that, but I'm just saying it's, their purview present. Yeah, well, I saw it right off, right. You know, hopefully the vote's gonna reflect that, but I'm just saying it's, their purview present, not.
Fair, fair enough. I mean, it's just eleven times I said the same thing, but I agree.
Yep.
Got that, Michelle?
I do.
Okay.
Of course she does.
She's good.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you just sign that and pass it down, and I'll take it with me, and hopefully our tax rate will get set tomorrow?
That'd be black or blue is a better.
No, it doesn't matter.
All right, while we're signing that. New business, Sarah White, Hands. Come on up, introduce yourself.
Hi, Sarah White, resident of Dudley and also the founder of Hands. And I asked to come before the board tonight just simply to update the board and the residents of Dudley as to the status of Hands. We're alive and well. We have applications available. Hands helping address the needs of Dudley seniors. It's heating assistance and electrical assistance for those in need, senior citizens. There are applications available at the Pearl Crawford Library, at the Dudley Post Office, and here at the Muleth Municipal Building at the Town Clerk's Office. So the applications are due by December thirty-first, although that's a soft deadline. And then the awards are given out in February. And with the anticipated increases in both electrical and fuel bills this year, not only are we welcoming applications, but we're also welcoming donations which can be sent to P O Box three forty-three here in Dudley, Massachusetts, addressed to Hands. And if anybody's looking for more information, we do have a website, handsofdudley.org, so that they can check that out.
Excellent. Any questions, comments?
Just, Mr. Chairman, Sarah, any fundraising coming up? I know you guys did a
No, we were, we did the toll booth until COVID hit, and we haven't done that for the last three years.
That cost you how much?
Oh, anywhere between twelve hundred and eighteen hundred dollars. So it wasn't a significant amount, although, I mean, every dollar makes a difference. But we have had, you know, there have been businesses who have donated a lot of personal donations. The Dudley Women's Club has been very loyal. The schools at times have donated. So we've been able to, you know, last year we were able to give a thousand-dollar awards to each applicant. And we're not gonna be able to do that this year unless we get a lot more in donations. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck, Sarah.
Thanks.
Next, a new business, police chief's appointment discussion. So we all know the police chief is retiring. He's told us at least a couple of times now, right, Chief?
Rumor has.
Changed his mind yet? I don't know.
No. So need to declare vacancy effective.
January thirteenth, Mr. Chairman.
January thirteenth, right. So we wanna have a, a public discussion about the process to to have a new chief. It says replacing the chief, but obviously it's.
Replace the position.
Replace the position. And so I wanna start by asking the town administrator, what you recommend in terms of this process?
Now, Mr. Chairman, the, the town has used different process, processes in the past that replaced major department heads. The fire department springs to mind. The highway springs to mind. In some cases, we've conducted a nationwide search when it was appropriate. In other cases, we've looked within the department, and I think in this case, there's not an issue that needs to be resolved by taking in, by conducting a nationwide search. And the appropriate course of action would be a promotion from within. Specifically, someone who's probably ready to go and take over the job and has been in a senior, a senior position, a senior leadership role. Lieutenant Karlowich would be the ideal candidate, I think, at this point for promotion, and I'd like the board to consider that.
Board of Selectmen, is, any, anyone on that recommendation, Mr. Massey?
Thank you. I've had many opportunities and availed myself to talk to Chief Weiner on how he feels, including leading up to the lieutenant's appointment at the time. That was, you know, we always felt that was an important position. We held a spot in the budget. It was more of a filler than anything all those years, and we're finally able to upgrade the department. And Lieutenant Karlowich, in his short time, has shown that he's more than capable of doing the job. So I had a chance to talk to the chief several times. As you know, we all informally talked to Merrick on lieutenant on some stuff, and you and I spoke on the telephone. As everyone's gonna know, it came down to what, what did I feel? Like, did I feel that the police department need a different hand steering the ship? Was there any ongoing issues? Doing a red flag, per se, that we didn't need an internal, but we needed an external promotion? I don't think that's the case. I mean, we all know through our interaction with residents in town, they love the chief the way it is. They, they, almost to a unanimous person, whenever he reaches out to me, it's always the professionalism, the dedication, the care and concern at the police show to the residents, whether it's a, you know, accident, nine-one-one call. I was talking to one officer not too long ago. We were in the parking lot, and a person pulled up, and he found a suspicious, like a, it wasn't a needle, I forget, it was Officer Smith, and he wanted to know what he could, what he could do with it, because it was his son. He has a younger son, and he was worried there was an influence. So Officer Smith took him aside, took him inside, you know, my bottom line is, I think, I like the direction that the, this seems to be going. I don't think we gotta make any kind of seismic shift to make it better.
Mr. Massey?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll echo what Steve just said. This, police department's running pretty well, right? I think everybody's paying attention, knows that. And it doesn't require, like, in my opinion, us really looking, you know, to find somebody, or what, we call it a hired gun, or someone to come in and we'll do some things maybe differently, you know, maybe improve things around the edges, but just like, you know, it, it didn't, it doesn't need a shakeup. We have, we have things that have worked well. We want it to continue to work well, so I think, you know, hiring from within, you know, is, is the right way to go here. I don't, I don't see any reason to go do that externally.
Mr. Chairman, through discussions and observations and, and talking to lieutenant, the chief, and, and other members, and knowing the environment in the station, I felt very comfortable with moving forward the way we are right now and backing up a hundred percent with no concerns of my own at this time. There's no question of loyalty or professionalism at all. And you got my support there.
Reader's Digest version of what I'm going to say is, if it's, if it isn't broken, don't fix it. I mean, even before I was a kid, this is the way it was done. It was, it was an internal
Hire.
Everyone got moved up. There were people brought in from the outside. And again, since I was a kid, everything's been good. We don't, we don't have any issues with the police department. You put something that, they put something on Facebook, and all the residents are replying. They, they, they're, they're behind them. They enjoy it. Why would we wanna change it? But with, with that being said, I mean, we, we recently had a, a promotion test for lieutenant. And the person who scored the, who scored the highest that accepted it is there. There's the person, and he's learning underneath the person who has learned underneath the people before him, who learned underneath the people before him. And it, it's not broken. Why fix it? Everything's great. Let's just keep it going. With that being said, I move to appoint Lieutenant Karlowich. I'm sorry?
Can, can I make that?
Oh, go right ahead. I'm sorry. I thought you already did. I was done.
No.
See, I'm so ready to keep things going. I'm ahead of myself here.
So I'd just like to say that, you know, the foundations of of solid leadership create an environment of integrity, high performance, and shows internal development within a group. So there's, there's great examples of, of all those within the department. And what you want is someone that has education about the work, the institutional knowledge of how Dudley works, and, and do all that in a, a tight-knit community. So I, I don't see a reason to to make huge, huge changes when you have the internal development within the department.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a suggestion? We ask lieutenant to come up with the public here from him a little bit, see what he thinks about accepting what seems to be the foregone conclusion at this point. On his way up, I'll just mention again, the board is making a decision or coming to a decision based on his, his past education, his institutional knowledge. We mentioned that he tested well for his current command position, and I think he's respected within the department. So that's, I believe, my synopsis of where the board is portraying that they are at this point.
Hi. If I may, I just wanna thank the board of giving me this opportunity. When I got promoted last year to lieutenant, Chief Weiner allowed me to make a lot of, be involved in a lot of decision-making. Allowed me to be involved in the, the budget, doing the bargaining with the union, being involved in a lot of the stuff that, as an administrator, he's involved in. And I believe our department is very unique. We have a great group of police officers that show how professional we are. And I think the town is very fortunate. As a leader, I rely on my group to carry that on, and I think we have a great department. So based on everything over the years, I believe I'm prepared to take over the role. Some big shoes to fill from our current chief, but I think I'm ready to fill those shoes. I will reach out to him once in a while, just to get an input from him on some ideas, but I think I'm ready for the role.
Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, well, just maybe just as more of a statement, just I'd wanna let everybody know that, you know, I, we did individually and talked to, talked to lieutenant. And, you know, all the questions we may have, you know, to really back up, you know, the decision, we wanna do that, and, and I, Merrick has a plan, which I'm sure he's gonna get into here. He has some really great ideas. It was very, I was very impressed, and I won't have any hesitation. So, Merrick, thanks for coming up tonight.
So?
Yeah, I just echo Mr. Massey, and I know we're gonna have a chance to do some question and answers with the lieutenant. Again, I've known Merrick a long time. We were joking, kids came over from the hospital. I was stepping around and putting the mail in his mailbox, bringing the kids up the driveway, but now look at him. Again, I echo what Mr. Massey said, talked to Merrick, Lieutenant, many times, and it's gonna be nice to see him lay out a little bit of his vision tonight, that the people at home have an understanding that it won't be seismic, as I said before, a seismic change, but he'll definitely be a stamp that Merrick will put on that department for years to come if he accepts any point.
So how, how do you envision the, moving forward with the department? What's your vision?
Well, I believe there's gonna be a couple of changes. I'd like to continue to invest in trying to get the, trying to get more full-time officers on board. As you know, the last two years, the reserve force has been pretty much diminished because of the Reform Act. It's really hard to get a reserve officer to help us out. So I'd like to see the department continue in trying to build up that force, build up in the technology, update technology. And biggest thing is continue to do the community policing that we do. Chief does a great job interacting with the schools, getting our officers involved in the schools, and I'd like to continue doing that. I think it's, it's great to have a great relationship with the community, and it all starts with the school system. And continue with the programs that chief started. I'd like to continue doing these programs.
You have any questions for us?
No.
It's only fair. You're getting peppered for questions, right?
It's okay.
Any other questions from Selectmen? Town administrator?
I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna pretend that I'm at home watching this, and my question would be, after you've, you've had the experience, you've been in the department for a while, you've worked with these guys for a while, how do they, how do you interact with them now going forward if you become the chief and vice versa? How do you, how does that dynamic change now?
Well, it, it does change because obviously you're a leader, and I have to lead by example. But over the years, since I got promoted to, since I've been a senior, one of the senior officers, to sergeant, to lieutenant, that has progressed differently as far as how I interact with officers. Obviously, there might be some issues that arise as far as discipline or anything like that. So even though I grew up with the ranks, I still have to lead, and there's gonna be some tough decisions that I might have to make that might not be, that I might have to act upon, that might not be very favorable to somebody, but as a chief, I might have to make that decision.
Yeah, leadership isn't about popularity contests.
You try to be a good leader, but sometimes you make decisions that aren't gonna be most popular, but you might have to do them.
Yeah, what we would ask is, you know, show integrity, be fair, and provide opportunities for development within the group.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, just, our lieutenant, real quick. Give us a quick synopsis, like, he is on a department, he had years in rank as a sergeant, now lieutenant. So people at home know, like you said, you were a senior guy for a while.
Yes.
You moved up.
So I started with Dudley Police in two thousand as a reserve police officer. In two thousand and two, I was promoted to a full-time position. I attended the thirty-seventh N P L C, which is the Full-Time Police Academy in Agua. I worked, for the most part, on the midnight shift for a couple of years. In twenty nineteen, I had the opportunity to get promoted to sergeant. I was sergeant on second shift for most of my tour. And last, about a year ago, I got promoted to lieutenant. And like I mentioned before, that when I got promoted to lieutenant, chief allowed me to take upon a lot of the, get involved in a lot of the tasks that he's involved in as far as the budget, the administrative part, the negotiations. Trying to, he's allowed me, given me the opportunity to make purchases for the department that upgraded our tasers, our rifles, our computers, our video system. So he's allowed me to make a lot of decisions, and I, I wanna thank him for that because I think that's prepared me for this role. I've also, as far as education-wise, I have a bachelor's degree from Curry College Criminal Justice, and I also have a master's degree from Nichols College in Counterterrorism. And I've always preached over the years, as I met the board, that integrity is always number one in my eyes, and I've always preached that to everybody. And I believe I gained a lot of respect from the officers, from all ranks, based on my ethics and my integrity.
Thanks, Merrick.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I think his record speaks for itself, the way he carries himself up to this point, very well. Dressed, as you can see. He's always polite, kind, and very fair. So I, I don't have any questions.
What's the board's pleasure?
Can we just ask the administrator how he would like to see it playing going forward?
So I think if we're gonna make a motion tonight to appoint, it will be, it should be pending successful contract negotiations, because it's a contract position. So I think we have one more meeting after the, I, I think we make the motion to appoint tonight. I think we have one more meeting after the, I, I think we make the motion to appoint tonight pending the contract negotiations and then when it's, when, hopefully when we've come to a successful, uh, end of the process, we'll have another, one more meeting, um, and talk about, uh, a, a permanent, uh, talk about the contract, let the public know that it's been, it's been settled and, uh, come up with a specific appointment date.
So we're usually jot notes, so.
So we don't have a date?
Uh, we have, we do have a date. We have a, we have a, I don't think that, that Chief Waynear, by the way, it's a testament to his leadership that we have s- so much internal ability to, to promote from within the department, but I don't think Chief Waynear is going to postpone his retirement.
No.
I think a lieutenant becomes an acting chief if we don't get to the point where we've come to terms with a, with a contract negotiation.
So we use January thirteenth as the date?
As it, as the date, yeah.
Okay, not the twenty-third, thirteenth?
Right, right.
Thirteenth.
So somehow, Mr. Chair, so somehow, Mr. Chair, the motion is, has to include pending approval.
This is the, what I would draft.
Can I, can I do what I came up with?
Yes.
I move to appoint Lieutenant Carlowitz as the next Chief of Police effective January thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, subject to successful contract negotiations and to authorize the town administrator to work with Labor Council to negotiate a contract between the board and Lieutenant Carlowitz, which would be subject to the board's approval. I got it all right?
Okay.
Second.
Got a second? Discussion?
Something up?
I knew you could say something. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
If I can, I want to thank the board for, um, for the vote, for the confidence. Uh, more importantly, Chief, he's, uh, he's always pushed me to, uh, to try to, uh, get into this position. He's got a lot of confidence in me and hopefully I don't let him down. And, um, you officers, again, they, um, are the backbone of the department and most importantly, my family, who's always been behind me for everything. And my parents always, everything that I have, my integrity, my ethics, all came from my parents. So without those people, I wouldn't be here. So I want to thank the board.
Congratulations, Merrick. Awesome.
The door is a swearing in, maybe.
Oh, yes, right.
Yeah.
Does a good picture at the swearing in?
Very good.
Unless you guys want one now?
She's always, she's always camera shy.
Take a picture of us while we're standing up.
Just if I may, Mr. Chairman, just briefly.
I'm sorry, Chief.
Yep.
Can we ask him to hang around until I can give him a, to come into the, uh, after the meeting? Just so I can hand him some paperwork to look at.
I told him about that earlier, so yeah, if you, I'll make that, that provision for you. I just wanted to, I just wanted to take a moment to, uh, thank the board and congratulate, uh, congratulate you on your pick. Uh, I think Merrick's going to do a great job. Uh, and you're exactly right. I think from, this department left civil service in nineteen seventy-five and, uh, ever since then, everything we've done is internal promotions and internal hires and, uh, it's a real good system. If you see, uh, retention rates with officers and things over the years, uh, it's really, it, it's unique to most of the departments around our area. And looking back on it, I believe the first, uh, chief under non-civil service was Leo Huleva, who started around seventy-five, seventy-six. And Bill Brought took over after that. Uh, he was there for seventeen or eighteen years and January marks twenty for me. So in almost fifty years, you've only had three police chiefs. And it's a testament to the way that the town hires people and prepares people and picks candidates for these jobs. So I think you've got another excellent, uh, excellent choice there. He's done really well in everything along the way. Lifelong town resident, uh, works very hard, speaks two languages, very good, uh, family-oriented guy. Gets along well with the guys in the department. They respect him for everything that he's done. Uh, he'll do well with all the things there and I'm certainly going to help him in whatever way I can. But I just want to congratulate the board and thank you for making a good, good decision. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief. All right. Old business. Highway Superintendent, update on Brandon Road Mill Race Bridge.
So the only, the only real update I have on that is, uh, the RFP has been assembled and, uh, I believe Michelle's put that out. It will be posted, what, on Wednesday? Should be out on the, uh, uh, the Register on Wednesday, Conbi's and, uh, local paper. So it, we'll still be required to, uh, do a filing over the course of the winter with, uh, Conservation and get a determination from them and, uh, it'll be put out to bid, uh, for, uh, the demolition to begin in, in spring. Not the, not the construction phase, but the demolition phase, which will, uh, give us a boost towards, uh, having a little, little bit small, bit, uh, less, uh, money that we'd be looking for for funding to, to fund the construction of, uh, temporary replacement.
Sure. Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, authorization for town administrator to enter into lease agreement for cell tower on authority of Board of Selectmen pursuant to two thousand fourteen town meeting vote.
So, Mr. Chairman, what happened was in twenty fourteen, the town meeting authorized us to put out, uh, an RFP for lease agreement, the lease Carroll Drive, which is near our old sewer treatment plant. Um, it's town-owned land. It's on Schofield Ave. There's a dead spot. We couldn't come to terms with it apparently at the time and it never went out to, 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 uh, RFP. Michelle and I and Jeff worked on an RFP, put it out. We've had two really responsive proposals come back. Um, there was one that was clearly the winner, both from a legal standpoint. It's gone to legal review. Um, with KP, they reviewed it and said, this is, this is the one that's going to be the most beneficial to the town from a financial perspective. The same bidder was the winner as well. So I'd like to, uh, start entering, I'd like to move forward with the authorization from twenty fourteen if the Board of Selectmen will authorize me to enter into that lease agreement. And of course, that lease agreement, I would propose that we, um, use that money to address some of our regulatory and compliance issues, which have, up until now, as the board recalls, we've spent a hundred and ninety thousand dollars so far in the last two years on regulatory and compliance issues that came right from the general fund. Um, so this is, will be a great opportunity and great source of income to try to offset some of those costs going forward. So I'm asking for the board to grant me authority to enter into that lease.
Mr. Mas. Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the town administrator to enter into a lease agreement for the cell tower on authority of the Board of Selectmen pursuant to twenty fourteen town meeting vote.
Second, Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, departmental communication. Jeff, you have anything else?
Just an update. Uh, finally, uh, the weather cooperated enough to get the, uh, line striping done Sunday night on Dudley Oxford Road and several other of the major routes in, in town. So that's done and out of the way. It's a big safety aspect. Uh, unfortunately, we've gone through, you know, September, October, we realized a lot of rainfall, so it was pretty, pretty difficult to get it in. We're finally, finally done and out of the way. And, uh, so we're out doing, uh, the last, uh, bit of patching in the roadways, uh, any of the troubled areas so that, uh, we're able to preserve the road over the win, roadways over the winter that haven't been, uh, repaved. And, uh, we're working at preparing for snow and ice control. So, uh, that's a, that's about it. Um, also, I, I know John mentioned before about the, uh, the FEMA grant that, uh, we're making application for and a, uh, cost benefit analysis just went in last Friday on that. There's a, the final application that'll go in on December fifth. So we're hopeful to be able to, uh, get a piece of, uh, some funding to, uh, address some flooding issues. That's about it.
Thanks, Jeff.
Question, Jeff?
Uh, question, Jeff?
Jeff? How are we doing with, um, like your contract plows? I see a lot of towns advertising for contract plows. We have most of the people coming back or is it something we're going to handle more of?
So, over the, over the past, uh, so, uh, since the time I've, I've been here, which will be just two years, uh, this December, um, we've only had a couple of, uh, contract plows. We do, uh, most of the, the work internally. Um, as far as manpower, we, we do have private people that work for us, but they actually, they actually sit in a, in a town-owned vehicle. Um, so we pay them as a, uh, as a part-time or provisional employee. And, uh, I think now we only have, uh, we only actually have one contract. One contract plow, so, um, I know a lot of the, a lot of the rates have increased, uh, that the state's paying a lot of the area towns and, uh, there's been, as you know, drastic increase in, uh, cost of fuel. So it, it would, we're actually fortunate that, uh, we're in the situation that we're in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, let loose the pigeons. We have finally our police cruisers that we ordered. Uh, the first one we ordered in October of, uh, twenty-one and the second one in, I think, January or February of this year. Uh, they finally arrived. So they, uh, they're out in the back. Uh, you see them out there. They've, uh, done an excellent job. Uh, the lieutenant, Arthur Ferreira, Dave Carpenter, Phil Megas, few of the other guys really worked on getting those together. Uh, a little bit different of a look too. You'll see some of the graphics who are kind of, uh, they were kind of downsized with them there, so they're, uh, they're not as, uh, not as prevalent as, as the other ones that were there. A little cheaper, but also it's, you can see it better at night. But, uh, they're called ghost graphics kind of thing. So you can see them during the day, but they're not as, uh, not as flash as usually is. I think you'll, you'll like it. They're pretty sharp out there. So all we're waiting on is just the final paperwork to come through and get them registered. And then we also, it's the interesting piece of working on the financial aspect because as you know, as money gets approved and it stays in one fiscal year and then, uh, things don't happen during that fiscal year, then you have to work around funding to get the, uh, the funding reactivated again. So we're dancing around with those things, but I thank the administrator for all of his help getting through those things, uh, now. Lastly, I'd say too, that the, uh, there were three package stores, uh, let's see, West Main Liquors, Angel Share and Marty's, uh, all were given copy of a letter, I think I forwarded up to the board today. Uh, you'll be able to see it along with some, uh, some of the stickers we talked about for their nip bottles. And, uh, talked to all the managers. They all seemed very enthusiastic about, uh, about trying it and also spreading the word to their customers about, uh, trying not to litter and, uh, controlling those things. So, uh, I did, uh, mentioned to them that, uh, you know, the board had no intentions on taking any drastic measures at this point and, uh, whatever cooperation they could give us to help control some of the littering or at least passing the word on to their patrons would be greatly appreciated. So they were grateful for that opportunity. So we'll see how that works out over time and hopefully, uh, it's at least something that's positive. But that's about it. Thank you much.
Thank you, Chief.
Treasure Collector. I don't see water sewer. I don't see, is that right? And Dean is, okay. Okay, okay.
Good evening. In, in anticipation of the, the assessor's presentation, I've got a couple of histories of DE one here. Tonight is probably not the night to go into the twenty eleven, but something that I, I think it's important, at least at this meeting, the amount of money that's dead excluded for twenty twenty-three for this classification hearing is one million, one hundred and forty thousand. If I go back to my twenty eleven one, because I hate to throw things away, we're at one point eight million, million eight twenty-one. So we're s- we've left money on the table in short. Um, so that is a conversation at one point that we could have. Historically, we should pick a point in time and work to level fund the debt so that your tax rate is consistent. It's a management practice. Um, I, I won't speak for the Abrams group, but I'm sure on, on more than one occasion, that's come up. You'd like to be consistent. Um, it just shows planning. Uh, anything from the treasure and collector's office? We had some water bills go out. Um, they're due first week in December. We are going to have our tax bills, obviously, once, uh, once the tax rate is approved, we'll be able to print those mid-month. We'll get them out. Much better with this software than previously, sort of, um, shorter lead time, uh, few more subtle, uh, efficiencies as far as addresses and what have you. Still on the legal-sized paper. We're going to stay in that format for the year. Uh, I always say this, I'm not sure how many people it catches, but there are a significant amount of people who would like to pay, um, the bill coming up. Anybody who needs to do that before they get on the plane to go down to Florida, um, please reach out. Um, and if someone calls the office, I'm happy to, uh, happy to get, make that communication so that whatever it is, um, no offense to anyone, but it never seems that bill gets down to Florida for them to pay on time. So happy to, uh, improve the communication. Uh, Hampshire Council of Governments had a small increase to the Medex plan, which brings it very close to the twenty eighteen rate. We had gone through, changed, uh, a few of the co-pays two or three years ago, which brought the total dollar amount down and it's brought its way right back up to, um, what it was. It'll be five years. Again, Medicare, uh, I think all of my retirees, I call them my retirees. Anytime that, that phone, uh, the, uh, the television ad comes on, we have somebody stop by, especially somebody who's sixty-three or sixty-four, what should I be doing? Very important that we had the health insurance policy manual in place. Um, and that's sort of the framework to go through and tell people who are sixty-three and sixty-four that at sixty-five, things continue. So we do take care of our retirees. And just as a side, a side note, um, so it's not lost in any of the, uh, the many pages. We have a provision in there for a surviving widowed spouse. So health insurance and dental, if they are on the plan at the time of retirement, it, uh, it continues until death do you part. And hopefully that's a long time away. Um, other than that, appreciate the time. I would like to be able to go through, um, during the budget discussions, when there's some planning as to sort of managing debt that's been excluded. Um, I know it's just not the snap of a finger to put something onto the debt, um, onto the tax rate, but a little bit of planning would make that process a little bit easier. I appreciate your time. Questions from the board?
Any questions?
Thanks, man.
All right, wonderful.
Good news that software is working as expected or makes it a little easier.
So if, so if you'll allow me an extra sixty seconds, uh, it seems every second or third week, there is another aspect that gets rolled out. Um, it went slowly in the beginning because we're running dual systems. Now it's at the point where the representative gives you the elbow saying, we should be building out this part. We should be tying in bank statements, so on and so forth. Uh, and I think part of the conversation is before the first of the year, all the salesmen are out. Mr. Carminiani, what are you using for a budgeting software? That specific question came out and we really need to look at some of the budgeting capabilities. And when, I don't think we've gotten to that point yet, but I think they're there. So the, the horizon looks bright. So it's a, it's a positive thing. Ultimately, the decisions aren't going to be, well, that sounds like a good number. It would be empirical data based off of one, two, three years' worth of actual data. It would be empirical data based off of one, two, three years' worth of actual data and you should be able to model at least one year ahead, if not more, formally, as opposed to putting together an Excel spreadsheet or something like that. Not that that isn't efficient, but part of it is, Abington was the best example for Vedar Systems and the way I viewed things, when it came to the quarterly, weekly reporting, someone has already rolled up their sleeves and put some, put some things together. So, when it comes to reporting, what are we looking at? You can almost boilerplate something that's been a success in another municipality and then be able to tailor that so that, whoa, Dudley doesn't have a Harbor Master, so we can net something out or so on and so forth. But the idea is you sort of have a path ahead of you to take advantage of some of the software as opposed to, here's last year's Excel spreadsheet, let's go through and we'll update it. So, little bit better, so good things to come.
Great, thank you. Student rep, Vanessa, what do you have for us?
So, we moved into stage two of our civics project and history class this week. My group and I have decided to explore the topic of tenure and how it shouldn't be allowed in schools as good quality teachers are being let go as opposed to teachers who are able to stay because of seniority and we think that it's an important topic because it's affected a lot of students personally. Tomorrow night is the Powderpuff Game at the school and all proceeds go to pancreatic cancer. Personally, I'm playing, the juniors and the freshmen are a team and then the seniors and the sophomores are also a team. I'm excited, but I'm also nervous and it's going to be freezing outside, but it should be fun.
Play outside?
Yeah, on the field. We're playing football.
Oh, I was hoping it was basketball.
I wish it was, because then it would have been indoors, but unfortunately, it's outside. Thanksgiving is this week, we have pep rally, so not a lot going on, but the civics project is definitely very interesting and we're working on it the rest of the week. Yes.
Is it a home game this year?
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Supposed to be nice, too.
Was it?
Better than thirty.
Oh, yeah. Great, anything else?
No.
Can I just have a follow-up question?
Yes.
Who came up with the topic for the civics?
Well, I don't know specifically. I guess me and my group, we just decided on it.
Did the pressing disappear maybe after they came up with it?
No.
That's unbelie, that's great.
I'm interested, yeah, that is a weighty topic and if you saw the look on, look on my face, like, that's a, that's one of those ones that I'd be really interested in.
Yeah, I'll be sure to keep you all updated on it, yes.
Mr. Marcy would be fascinated to be updated.
No, it's just something you don't hear about very often, but that's good that, from a student's point of view, is a spectacular way to look at that.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa.
Thank you, Vanessa. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, you guys.
Board member comments, Mr. Landry.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Three things, I'd like to congratulate Lieutenant Carlowitz again and thank Vanessa for her job well done and I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and safe.
Mr. Sullivan?
Chair, thank you. It's something we usually do at the beginning of the meeting and we missed tonight. It's brought to my attention recently, we had some staff members lose, family members around the holidays, always a tough time, so, you know, I speak for the entire board, send out sympathies to Deb Thibodeau and Brian Squidlier, who lost their sister recently, firefighter lieutenant Scotty Benoit, who I also called lieutenant because he was lieutenant in the call department. He lost his father-in-law. It was brought to my attention that Sergeant Anissa's family suffered a loss recently also, the loss of his mother-in-law. So, on behalf of the entire board, and I'm sure I speak for the town, send out our sympathies and if I missed anybody, please don't hesitate to reach out. It's important to let people know that, we know they're not just robots, they have feelings and they're, they're human beings. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone, also.
Mr. Marcy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also want to congratulate Merrick again, you know, I think it's Thanksgiving week, right? We should all be thankful that we have such a well-run police department that it, you know, sort of makes it, I want it easy for the board to make a decision like that and also thankful that we've had chief's point, what, three chiefs in fifty years? I mean, that's, that's saying something, so I'm, I'm happy that we're able to continue that. Also, thank you, Vanessa, for your first official update, that was fantastic. Now that I know it's a home game, so maybe, maybe we'll go, so that feels good. And thank you to Lisa Berg for the, the update this year on the assessor stuff, so. Anyway, thank, be thankful for what we have, it's going to be a, a cold winter. Keep an eye on your neighbors, go check on them and we'll see everybody when we get back Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Merrick, for talking to us tonight and work on a relationship going Want to thank the Cub Scout PAC two seventy-four for running a, back in the cake auction business, back, they used to work with the Lions back in the day for some donations. This year, they chose to work with the Women's Club and donate the proceeds to the, the fundraising for our playground next door, so that went really well, hopefully getting more people back next year now that it's, you know, in person and, and safe. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. With that, Mr. Marcy? Mr. Chair, I move that we convene into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Subsection twenty-one, specifically Reasons Two and Three, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body as now declared by the chair. And further, the board will not reconvene into public session.
Second.
All in favor? Roll call vote.
Stephen Sullivan, aye.
Joe Marcy, aye.
Mark Landry, aye.
Jay Johnson, aye. Unanimous. Thank you.